... board for September 17th, 2020. This board, this meeting will be a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing new meetings under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20.
Do you want to do roll call attendance for the call, the meeting to order?
Yes, please.
You're on mute. Says you're still on mute. Okay, sorry. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Here.
Member Españo.
Here.
Member Gaffney.
Here.
Member Rappaport. Do we, do we want to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Do we have a little flag to show or should we all just?
I don't have one.
Chair one if you'd like.
Okay, well, we'll just say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic which stands by our side.
Under God, indivisible, and天地无疆， liberty and justice for all. We're better at that in person.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. We're going to start off this meeting with a couple of continuances. If I could have a motion, please, on item 7E.
Can I first just let people know how to access the meeting?
Of course, yes.
Sure. So the meeting is held via WebEx. The link is on our website as well as the calendar link with the agenda, townofberlinianwebx.com. The meeting number is 173-582-8320, password 2020. If you'd like to join by phone, it's 617-315-0704 with meeting number 173-582-8320. The meeting is also broadcast on BCAT Government Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live and BCAT Facebook, the BCAT Facebook Live, the BCAT Facebook page. We will also, the public will be able to make comments during the hearing. During the time for public comment, questions can be asked via WebEx phone, Facebook Live, WebEx chat, and email at planning@berlinian.org. During the meeting, all persons wishing to speak, ask a question or comment must identify themselves. We also ask that if you, that you be recognized by the chair. If you do speak out of turn, you may be muted until such time as you're recognized.
Okay.
And all roll call votes will be taken by, all votes will be taken by roll call.
Thank you, Kristin. So actually, I was mistaken earlier. I'm looking for a motion actually on item 8D.
Motion to take item 8D out of order, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Okay, item, sorry. Item 8D is a continued discussion, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 4 and 5 Redmond Street, Mari Hills Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 1st, 2020 is requested by the applicant in an email dated September 15th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
Member LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item 8E out of order.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Item 8E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 0 Birch Street. James Danaher is the applicant.
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 1st, 2020.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Thank you. Now, the Planning Board is going to be entering into executive session, so we're going to be leaving this particular meeting, going to executive session, but this will be held open and we will be coming back in hopefully a few minutes, maybe 30 if we had to guess for people who are, who want to go do something else while they wait for this to be over. So I am ready now for a motion for executive session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session per General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, in order to discuss, flash, consider strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of General Walker Estates LLC versus, oh, versus rule et al., Land Court Docket Number 20MISC, miscellaneous 000342, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Planning Board and Chair, and the Chair so declares and to reconvene in regular session at the conclusion of executive session is authorized by General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21B, 4.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
So for members, you're going to exit out. I sent you an email with the contact information for the executive session. Jen will stay here for anyone who has any questions about, well, we don't know what, I mean, we'll come back when we get back, but Jen will be here from staff to keep this meeting open. So we'll see, we'll see you soon.
So we do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we're moving on to item 7 on our list, administrative matters. Item 7A is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change. 56 Millsex Turnpike Burlecks Realty LLC is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thomas Murphy for the applicants. Just to remind the board that we gave a brief presentation at the meeting back in August. This is about some work to the parking lot down at 56 Millsex Turnpike. Since that time, my clients filed an application for erosion sedimentation control with the Concom. They've sent notice to the, to EverSource regarding the work to be done under the retention wires on the Board of Health agenda for next Tuesday, I believe. Jim DeCulless, who's the engineer, and my client George Katsarakas are both online with us this evening, so we're available to answer any questions that the board may have at this stage of the game, but things are moving along pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Kristin?
So I can have a brief plan so we can see it, but as he's doing that, Tom, can you give us an update on your appearance in front of Conservation Commission as well as Board of Health?
I'm going to defer to Jim DeCulless on that if I could, if Kristin, I am, Jim's been handling both of those matters.
Good evening, everyone. We have a hearing scheduled for next Tuesday, excuse me, the 22nd with the Board of Health, and Christine Mathis has issued a preliminary decision, and we feel like we're moving forward with that. Conservation Commission has asked for test pit logs, and we provided those, and those are in the amended sheet that was uploaded to the viewpoint system.
And Jim, if, have you, under, have you put, have you done new test pits in the areas of the proposed infiltration system?
No. Test pits were done in 2013, and there's a pretty even distribution of test pits around where the stormwater infiltration field is going. They're all consistent, and we just didn't feel as though, based on those prior successful results, that it was necessary to go back out and dig a specific test pit right at the location of the infiltration field.
Okay. And then Conservation for the sedimentation and erosion, oh, you don't, it's, you're under the threshold, so it's administrative, correct?
That's correct. We're under 20,000 square feet of disturbance.
Okay. And then the question with that was, was there additional information that they were looking for, or they issued?
Yeah. The only thing that they were looking for were those test pits, locations and the test pit logs. So the locations, you can see on this plan that you have up on the screen, there's six test pits that were advanced in 2013, and the test pit logs were also provided under separate cover.
Okay. So for the, for the board, there, I know, knowing there were a couple other outstanding comments from Board of Health and Concom, we don't have a decision drafted, but what we had hoped to do this evening was just kind of get a general consensus about if there were any, anything in particular that the board was concerned about with the layout of the plan. So once we did get the additional information from Board of Health and Conservation Commission, we'd be in a position to draft a decision and move forward. I know one of the, one of the things that we were looking at, at least from a staff level, was the daycare proposal as, and the potential outdoor areas that were to the, if you're looking at the plan, to the left of, the left of the building, behind the building. And I know Jim and George, you're going to check with the providers to see if there was any additional areas or changes or modifications necessary to accommodate what was the regulation associated with outdoor areas for the two daycares that you have within the site. So I wasn't sure if you had done that, and so you can answer that, but from there for the board, just again, just looking for kind of general, general thoughts on the overall layout of the plan as presented.
Kristin, Kristin, just to answer that question, yes, we have modified the layout of the daycare facility, and you'll see that there's a fence line that bifurcates the outdoor play area, and we have confirmed that that does meet the regulations and requirements of each facility.
This is Barbara again. Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to the board and see if people have questions. Joe Impamba.
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Paul Raymond?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Ernie Covino?
No questions, thank you.
Bill Gaffney?
No questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Brenda Rappaport?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mike Españo?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I also have no questions. Well, that one was easy.
Madam Chair, make a motion, whoa, that's to continue, says.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
That's to continue to October 1st, 2020.
Right, thank you. Okay, then moving on to, thank you, thanks, thanks, Tom. The next item on our agenda is item 8A, a continued public hearing, application for approval of amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 1000 Wall Road. Edward and Elena Yevitskaya are the applicants. So who is here representing the applicant? If you could identify yourself, that would be great.
Madam Chair, Brian Levy for the applicant.
Hi, Brian, thank you.
Good evening. I've asked the board to share this plan that we recently submitted. I didn't know, Madam Chair, whether you had a report from, from Kristin to start us off or not.
I think that's what we'll start with. Thank you, yes. Kristin?
Don't have, let's see, so I don't have an extensive report. I will say that we do have Town Council on the line with us this evening, so if there are some questions that, there were a few things that came up at the last meeting regarding the, the variance, which Adam, Adam Costa can weigh in on. Overall, I think we discussed at the last meeting in terms of if this was coming in, there was concerns, obviously, the concerns raised by the neighbors about the layout. We did talk a little bit about, was there any additional screening that could be proposed along the proposed drive to minimize the visual impact of, of the drive on the neighbors of 30 and 26. And that was, I think, I think I'm forgetting one thing, but that was about it. We do have a draft decision for you this evening. That draft decision includes kind of a question mark of potential additional landscaping. It also includes, just making sure that there was some question about the existing, the existing utilities that served this, this dwelling, that just make sure that they're shown on the picture where they actually are in the ground and where they're proposed to be, so that's a condition. And then just other, actually, that's about it, other than the, the department comments. So I usually have two screens. My other screen is having twelve of them, so I'm going between the two, sorry. I apologize for going in and out. So with that, I think I would, if, anyway, go to the board members if they have any additional questions, or if the applicant or wanted to weigh in on any items.
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
So in its, in a 10-page decision that the board issued back on October 30th, 2019, the board unanimously approved my client's two lot subdivision, subject to several conditions and several waivers. The Planning Board is now being asked to consider this modification, with the only issue being the shifting the location of a portion of the paved driveway running between Cormier Road and House Lot. The applicant is not proposing any other changes to the conditions or the waivers. The proposed conditions that Kristin mentioned in her lead-in sound perfectly reasonable, if there are to be extra ones. The notice for this application was totally proper. It was published twice in the Woburn paper, paper which is also circulated in Burlington. The certified abutters list was provided, mailings were made pursuant to that abutters list, and under the Subdivision Control Act, abutters are entitled to notice of a subdivision application, and this, this, this was done. There's only one parcel in Woburn which is an abutter to this project, which is the parcel owned by the city of Woburn, and that notice was given to Woburn. So if I could just direct your attention to this plan, what it shows us is the approved driveway, the yellow wording there, and it's pointing toward the sort of the darker gray or shaded area. So that's the driveway that was approved by the Planning Board last October. And what we're proposing to do is to shift the driveway as shown in the plan, which is sort of the lighter, whiter colored driveway. And it may be a little bit hard for you to see on your screen, but there's a number there, 23.9 feet, and that number is the, the maximum or the greatest, location of the greatest shift of the driveway, 23.9 feet. The rest of the shift of the driveway is lesser than that. It's also a little bit harder to see on this plan, but there is a mature tree in the approved driveway. I don't know if you can show that with your cursor. Right there, there's a mature driver, mature tree that would come down where the driveway built is, is approved. Moving the driveway saves the tree. It also moves the driveway. There's also an additional tree to the, below that, below the words approved driveway, is another large mature tree. Will be moving the driveway away from that tree as well. So the driveway also, as you can see, moves the driveway at a point where it's closest to 30 Cormier. It pushes it towards 26 Cormier, and the driveway actually is, is much more equidistant between the two homes in the new arrangement. The driveway would only have middle loan use. The only person that can use the driveway will be the homeowner of the new lot, which would be my clients driving back and forth from the new house to the, to the street. And the, you know, sort of the legal underpinning to that was explained in all of the title memorandums, that only they and the Russells have the right to pass and repass on this particular easement. So we also talked last time about the cut-through issue, that there are existing boulders and landscaping at the end of the right-of-way which would block that movement. There's also a large disconnect between the end of the proposed driveway, the pavement, and the pavement for the right-of-way that goes out to Mallor Road. You can see that gap in the pavement there, and the only people with the right to remove the, the, sort of the blockages where the boulders and the landscaping between those two driveways are the Russells and the, my clients, who would have absolutely zero incentive to remove that and to create that issue. So that brings us to the hearing last time, and there are really two points I want to focus on, and then I'll stop talking. One is the variance. There's a lot of conversation at the last hearing that it's, the board expressed concern that the last, at the last hearing, that the frontage and lot width variance that was granted for the, from my client's property was somehow tied to a specific access, and that access had to be off Muller. And that really wasn't fair to go forward with the subdivision because of that. There is absolutely nothing, nothing in the record that supports that. The variance says nothing about the point of access to the new additional, the second lot that's added by the subdivision. The variance application says nothing about access. The variance is very focused. All it does is grants a frontage variance and a lot with variance. That's it. It's not subject to any conditions with respect to access. So to the extent that this board has said, well, we need to pause and go back to the zoning board, we believe, with all due respect, that that would be a major error by the board were to take that position, because I don't believe there's any support for it. But your Town Council is on the line, and I'm sure he'll correct me if he believes I'm incorrect. My final, my second and final point is this. It relates to the lawsuit issue, I'll call it. We all know that this approval granted by the board is under appeal, and there was discussion last time that, well, maybe we should wait. Maybe we should wait for a decision from the courts before we rule on this modification application. I would submit to you that that's not a proper consideration for the Planning Board. The Planning Board rules on amendments, 7.2.2 of your subdivision regulations says, quote, "The Planning Board shall evaluate, shall evaluate the proposed amendment in accordance with the approval criteria set out in Section 6.6.4." So those are your approval criteria. Those approval criteria in 664 focus on what? They focus naturally on compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations, and that's it. There's nothing in the approval criteria that permit the Planning Board to consider any lawsuit, never mind this particular lawsuit in question here. There was also a suggestion last time that maybe it's better to await the results of that lawsuit rather than, than, than do this. I think the board is well aware that it has a decision deadline in this case, and that waiting a year or two for the litigation to resolve is really not an option for the board in this case because of the rules under which it operates in terms of the need to make a decision within the timeframe set forth in the subdivision control law. So for all of those reasons, we would request that the board grant this small shifting of the driveway. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levy. I do want to hear from Town Council, but before I do that, I have one quick question for you. Am I correct in understanding from your statement after Kristin spoke, that your client is willing to provide additional screening on that driveway for the benefit of the neighbor on the, I guess it's, is it 26? Is that the number, or 24?
Yeah, so, Mike, I have not had a chance to discuss this with my client, but they're on the line, and we'd sort of be putting them on the spot, but I would ask them to, 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 to speak up and say whether or not that would be.
Why don't we hear from Town Council, and then we'll give them some time to contemplate it, so they have a few minutes to think about it, okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Costa, could you weigh in and advise the board as to whether or not you agree with what Mr. Levy had, or if there are any other matters you think we need to consider?
So thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that I generally concur with the statements that Attorney Levy made relative to the variance and relative to the appropriateness or inappropriateness of acting as opposed to waiting on the application that's pending. Do you want me to simply address those issues? Are those the issues that the board has questions about? I don't want to, I don't want to answer a question that's not being asked by the board. Is the board concerned with those issues? Do you want me to tackle each of them one, one at a time?
I think you can briefly address them, and then I'll turn it over to the board, and they may have other questions for you as well.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll talk to the, I'll speak to the variance issue first. So my, my general advice to the boards that I represent is to remember what is and what is not within your purview, and I don't, I don't do that to tie a board's hands. I, I do it to keep boards out of trouble, and also really to relieve some pressure that's often placed on boards by applicants, expecting you to do more than you're authorized to do by the enabling legislation. So what you have before you is a modification to a subdivision approval. You don't have a variance application before you. You would have no authority to act on a variance application as a planning board. I understand that there was a variance application submitted prior to the original subdivision approval. It was submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I understand that the Zoning Board of Appeals issued those variances for lot frontage and for lot width. I've had an opportunity to review those variance decisions or that decision issuing those variances. I would generally advise the board, in the context of what's presently before you, an amendment to a subdivision approval, to consider the differences between the original subdivision approval and the new subdivision approval, and unless any of that somehow implicates the variance, the variance really shouldn't be on the table. There are often multiple permits and approvals and sign-offs required for a single project. There may be a single project that requires a special permit and a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals, subdivision approval from the Planning Board, an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and it's really the role of the Building Department and the Building Commissioner upon application for a building permit to go through that check. application for a building permit to go through that checklist and determine whether all the various permits and approvals have issued. It's not the responsibility of zoning to ensure that the proper conservation commission process has been followed or the proper permit is issued, or the responsibility of planning to ensure that zoning has issued the variance that's required. There certainly is some overlap and there are circumstances where a planning board might say, if we're going to authorize this subdivision on the basis that you have a frontage variance, we need to know that you have the variance. You've got to provide us with some evidence of that or we're going to make the approval contingent upon you obtaining that variance. In these circumstances, based upon what I know and have reviewed the variance, generally concur with, with what council has said, that there, there are some variances that are very, that very closely tailored to what's been submitted. And that, number one, incorporate a specific plan by reference and indicate that the variance is being issued for the development to be built in accordance with that particular plan, such that the plan becomes essentially a condition of the decision. There are other variance decisions that will go into great specifics with respect to how the project is, is being designed and will identify what the variances are that are being issued and how they relate to the project as designed. As I review the variance that issued in this particular case, I don't see that. I see that there were two lots, lots A and lot B. Those lots, in fact, are, are different than lot A and B as they exist today, but truth be told, they're different than lots A and B that were approved by this board previously during the first go around, during the first subdivision approval. But I don't know that it matters so far as the variance is concerned. The variance states that lot A is going to have 54.22 feet of frontage and is going to have a lot width of 15.1 feet along a distance of approximately 200 feet. The variance says that lot B is going to have 50 feet of frontage and similarly is going to have a 15 foot width along a stretch for approximately 200 feet. Whether lots A and B are designed as they were at the time of the application for the zoning board or designed the way that they were at the time of the application for the original subdivision approval that your board issued, which of course is the same as those lots are designed now, all that's changing is the driveway configuration to Cormier. The reality is that that variance in my mind is still, still valid, that there has been no change to frontage on Muller Road, there has been no change to that 200 foot stretch of lot width for either lot A or lot B. So I don't see how modifying the driveway, and in fact, if we were to even go back to the original subdivision approval that your board issued, I don't see how modifying the lot line between lots A and B is affected by that variance. I simply don't think that it is. So there may be circumstances, I'm not stating sort of a bright line rule here, that in no circumstance does a variance need to be modified if the plan changes as a consequence of what the planning board does. There may be some instances where that's required. I simply don't believe that this is such an instance based upon the way that I read the variance. But that's my, that's my position on the variance issue. With regard to the, the timing issue, and, and that's, that's a question, and I touched on this already a bit when I talked about the, the different purviews of the various municipal bodies. It, it's, it's something that I've heard many boards ask, particularly when a case is in litigation. Can we wait? Because we feel we'd be in a much better position to make a, a, a fully informed decision if we had some guidance from the court. And in fact, sometimes boards say, not, it's not even a case in litigation, it's not even that they want to wait on, on a court of law, they want to wait on what another municipal body is doing. We need additional information. We need to first see the approval from Concom or see the approval from zoning. And generally, my advice in either of these circumstances is if, if what's going to be done by the other municipal board, for example, is going to have an adverse impact on what's currently before you and is within your purview. A good example would be you're issuing a special permit and you're entitled to consider environmental effects and yet the applicant's refusing to provide you with the same information that's provided to Concom, you can demand that information. But it's really the developer, the applicant, the proponent of the project that dictates the sequence of permitting. Some developers seek all permits and approvals simultaneously. Others choose to sort of piggyback the various permits and approvals, thinking that if they don't get the first one, they're not going to spend the time or the effort or the money on seeking two others until they get a definitive answer on the first permit. But it's the developer's choice how to permit the project. There's a risk involved with that. If a developer seeks a subdivision approval and then later goes to conservation commission and as a consequence of the order of conditions, the, the site is, wetlands have migrated or in different locations than they had anticipated, there are Concom order of conditions requirements that don't allow the subdivision to be built the way that it was just approved by the planning board, well then that's the applicant's risk. The applicant then has to go back to the planning board and modify its subdivision. But in my mind, from, in my opinion, that's not justification for the planning board to say in the first instance, well, we're demanding that you go and you get your order of conditions and we're going to keep this process open indefinitely. Because frankly, you can't keep the process open indefinitely. You do have deadlines. I will say, and I think this is the only point that maybe I disagree a bit with council on, that you're not really under those strict deadlines today because of the COVID-19 orders that extend many of those deadlines and essentially prohibit constructive approvals for so long as the governor's order is in effect. But nevertheless, I, I would agree that if this litigation takes another year and a half or two years to resolve, chances are, hopefully for all of our sake, the COVID-19 orders are not going to be in effect for two more years. Chances are that at some point in that process, over the next two years, while the litigation's still underway, you're going to be up against the deadline and you're going to have to act. So I don't think that you can simply hit the pause button as much as I'd like to tell you that you can, because I know it would be easier for the board. I do think you have to look at what's before you, the amendment application, judge it on its own merits and sort of let the cards fall where they may with respect to the underlying litigation.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Rain. And I'm going to turn it over now to the board for questions for, and questions can be either to the applicant or to town council. Joe and Pemba.
Yeah. Were we going to, were we going to give the answer to that question about the screening then though?
Oh, okay. Why don't we do that first? Okay.
Mark and Renata, are you on the line?
We're on the line.
Yeah, we're here.
So, I mean, we have never been against doing anything that would be, you know, more pleasant for the entire neighborhood. So in terms of screening, we're fine with that.
Okay. So perhaps we can discuss that in greater detail later. If this moves forward, we can perhaps ask you to submit a landscaping plan that could be approved by staff.
That's great. No problem.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Madam Chair, I just, the condition has a buffer for both 26 and 30 because they, they both seem to have indicated at the last meeting that the driveway location was visually problematic as, as, as part of the items. So the, the screening would be for neighbors.
For both.
With all, to make sure that, ensure proper site distance.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kristen. Okay. So let's hear from the board. Joe.
No. I mean, I'm, I kind of wanted to see a, I kind of wanted to see a plan on that. I wanted to see the landscape plan to see what kind of screening was in there before I really went on with my decision.
Okay. Fair enough. Anything else? No?
Not, not for me.
Okay. Paul Raymond?
No. I agree with Joe. I just, I just, everything that's happened down there, virtually I've been opposed to. And even more so since I told you my recent walk where there, the driveway was completely blocked going into there and so forth. I, I, I made a mistake not to vote against it initially and I'm not going to vote for anything further that's happening down there.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Ernie Cavino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I would be in favor of it as long as the proponent was agreeable and, and put screening on either side. I understand the two neighbors are going to be affected even though this appears to be a right of way that the, the applicant can legally use and that's something that's obviously out of our hands. So, and I, I would leave the screening, the approval on the screening up to the chair and the planning board staff. I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. Bill, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I had, my, my concern again is on, on the appeal and I, I understand with the written decision. But, you know, being on the board of appeals for 15 years, if you look at the minutes of that and maybe go through the tape, what the intent of the board was, and I've always been troubled with from a board of appeals decision, typically they're written, at least when I was on the board, it was written that the decision was per the plan and you would note the plan and the revision. So if, if the, if the plan gets revised from the house being over to left and have access on Muller Road and now switches over to the right and now has access to Cormier, in my opinion, and again, I've, I've only been to Land Court once, that blows the entire appeal out of the water. So that's why I'm concerned that we're going to vote on something. And again, when we voted on it, we had no idea that there was not an approved access to that. We got from the past attorney that this was approved, everything was fine, everybody says clean access in there. And then all of a sudden we see that there's some litigation on that. So I'm not comfortable in all voting on when you get something on litigation. So again, if, if I go back to the fourth appeals minutes, review the tape, if you give me dates on that and get a copy of the, of the appeal minutes, because I have experience on that, that would probably help me a little bit. I, I would ask staff then, what are my options to disapprove this? What am I looking at and what, what do my conditions are to disapprove? What do I have those on? Is it disturbance of the neighbors on either side? What, what, what do I have for options on that?
Thank you, Bill. Staff, would you like to weigh in on that?
Sure. And since I have the wonderful situation where council is here, I would love for council to help outline and I'm sure much more succinctly say to you kind of where we are in terms of what's in front of us and how much control we have of surrounding it. And to the question of denial.
Is it traffic that they normally didn't have before and, and things like that?
So, so thank you, Kristen and through you, Madam Chair. So I, I, I have a sense through the last couple of board members who have spoken that there's, there are some concerns that maybe even date back to the original approval of the subdivision, to the approval that's now the subject of pending litigation. So all I can tell you as council is legally what's before you. And whether you choose to make a decision based upon the advice I'm about to give or whether you choose to sort of hearken back to what was before the board previously and approved and now the subject of litigation, that's sort of up to you. But I will say this. When amendments are proposed, and this is not a law that's unique, this is not a principle of law that's unique to subdivisions, when, whether it's a subdivision, a special permit, a variance, when there is a subsequent application made to the permitting authority to amend the underlying permit, the matter that's before the board is not generally the entire permit that issued. It doesn't reopen the entire permit because the applicant can always go back and rely upon the original permit that was issued. So what is before the board on an amendment application is what's different. What's changed? The actual quote unquote amendment that is being proposed. And so as I understand it, and I certainly did not assist, was not present, did not participate in the public hearing process on the original approval of the subdivision. I'm familiar with it because the board's decision was challenged and I have an appearance in that litigation, although I haven't been an active participant. I'm familiar with what occurred, but I wasn't there for it. I didn't see it or hear it with my own two eyes or, or ears. But what I understand is that what is now before you in terms of the amendment is a relocation, a shifting of the driveway, as we currently see on the screen, from the quote unquote approved driveway shown to the quote unquote proposed modified driveway that's shown. So to answer the question that's been asked, you know, what are your options in terms of a disapproval? You would have to identify something that results, something within purview of the planning board, something that would typically be within your purview in the context of a subdivision review, but that specifically results from the shifting of the driveway from the location of the approved driveway shown, the location of the proposed modified driveway, you believe to be problematic and inconsistent with your subdivision rules and regulations, inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the subdivision control law. If there were additional waivers that were required, you could evaluate the public interest. You could say, well, you, you, you needed three waivers before your modification of your amendment now requires five waivers. These two additional waivers are inconsistent with the public interest and that would be an appropriate standard. But again, as I understand it, and Kristen will correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that this modified proposal triggers the need for any additional waivers. So I don't think that waivers are an issue that's before you. I think the issue that's before you is, is there something about the new driveway location that is more problematic for you as a board than the old driveway location? And identifying what those differences are, identifying why it is it's more, that it's more problematic and tying that to specific requirements in your rules and regulations that you believe justify a denial of the modification.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And, and thank you, Mr. Costa. Bill, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Where am I in the order? Who's up? Brenda? Brenda, do you have any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question from Mr. Levy. I'm going to go back a little bit. I apologize if I missed this last meeting. I just, I'm going round and round on this thing. What are the, what are the initial reasoning for the change in the driveway? Was it just to preserve those trees? Is it better sightlines? Is it more frontage?
So to respond to that, the initial reasoning for the board, for the, for the modification application was because the, in the opinion of the title examiner, that there's no question of clear title to the, the new location. The examiner also thought that with respect to the approved location, that my client had the easement that's necessary, the title necessary, but he felt it was a clearer, stronger case with respect to where we are moving, proposed to move, the driveway. The incidental benefits of that are the non removal of one of the trees, moving further away from second tree and placing the driveway so it's less close to 30. Because you, you can see the way it falls right now. There's one spot where it's, it's closer to 30 and we'd be moving it away. So it's kind of like more equidistant between the two homes.
Thank you. As far as the amendment goes, I don't really have much of an issue with it. I do have an issue with just some of the things that have happened in this, this, we'll say occurrence. But I guess we're just talking about the amendment right now and as of right now, I don't have problems with it. Hopefully, we do have some butters that can speak again to this. I don't know if we have any, but I just hope for that. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And the butters will be given a chance to speak. Mike? Okay. Okay. My turn. I share a lot of the same concerns as my fellow board members and I do kind of wish we could turn back the clock and revisit this whole issue, but it's my understanding that we can't. And what is before us is shifting the driveway and nothing else. And it's my opinion that although I think this whole development is difficult and regrettable and I feel for the neighbors, I don't think I can, I can't come up with justification for denying the shift of the driveway, which is the matter before us. So that's where, where I stand on that. I would like to get, see if there are other members of the listening audience that would like to weigh in on this, neighbors or anyone else who would like to participate, identify yourself.
Madam Chair, this is Ernie, just a real, hopefully a real quick question and answer from town council. And that is if we deny this amendment, then the, the approved subdivision stands. So the driveway is closer to the house at 30, et cetera. Is that, is that correct from town council?
Through you, Madam Chair. The answer is yes, subject to the appeal. So it can stand, your original decision stands, subject to it being affirmed on appeal. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All set. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience, especially neighbors or butters who would like to speak?
Yes, this is Sura Neil Russell from 26 Cormier Road in Burlington. And first of all, I would like to thank you for sending out the public notice of tonight's meeting. And I just have a few key points to make as a result of all the many past planning board meetings. All the butters on Cormier Road in Kelly Farm Way are totally opposed to this plan. There are major, there are going to be major safety issues, which have also been a concern of many of the planning board members. Because with this new plan, with the driveway going in from Cormier to the new house, there's no way a fire truck or an ambulance could get in and out. They're going to have to back out onto Cormier Road, which is a very busy road normally. So it's not going to really solve any issues with regard to the public safety issues that have been raised over many meetings.
Yeah, in addition to, to, to those things, I wanted to address the, the things about the zoning board. Essentially, we're trying to find a way to get an actual first hearing in front of the zoning board. There have been at least two different hearings of the zoning board that, that we were never quite about. And in addition to that, the original approval was tied to a specific site plan. Even if the minutes didn't state that, there was a site plan attached to the zoning board application in the first instance. When the application, that was in September of 2018, when the lot was on the west side. When the variance expired and was renewed, the applicant resubmitted with no notes and no site plan, thus implying, if not actually stating, that the plan was still in effect with the west side lot. And in, in terms of our lawyer and our possible litigation, we're going to look at what we can do in order to keep this from happening. We never did get a hearing before the zoning board. Apparently, we're not going to get it through this avenue. It looks like we're going to have to potentially litigate over that in order to follow through on this. So in addition to, to, to all of that, of course, this is just going to open the door to probably future litigation, which the board has also expressed concerns over. All of the, it's our understanding that it's perfectly within the board's purview to turn this down on the basis of the quality of life, the quality of the neighborhood, the traffic, the concerns of the butters, safety concerns. Any of those issues is sufficient grounds to turn down any of these plans. Admittedly, the, the fine point of moving the driveway is supposedly on the agenda here. But I don't believe, in fact, Town Council even said in its initial remarks that there's any number of reasons why the board could turn this down. And, and we'll have to look at our litigation options if, if we have to, if this moves forward to keep this from happening. And we believe we have very good grounds, on several grounds, to go forward with that. So don't open the door for the future litigation. And also remind you that this site has been subject to multiple environmental and conservation violations over the years. And this just seems to open the door to even more possibilities for that in the future, and tied to more litigation in the future. Again, all these seem to be, to be valid reasons for the board to vote down any, any plan, regardless of whether this is an amended driveway or, or the original plan. And I have been carefully holding back this remark till we got to this point. But as, as Mr. Levy had noted, we do have the right to pass through. I believe that 30 Cormier also does based on documents we have. But if this was to move forward, we are going to restore access to Muller Road, because we're losing property value by this driveway going in. And it's our opinion that we could gain back some property value by opening this up and passing through our, our right to pass through. And if that's the case, we're going to ask that the Muller Road side be revisited with all the improvements, improvements that were being required on the first site plan. Widen it out to the maximum extent possible, relocate the fire hydrants, make that access as possible, as safe as possible for the people who have the right to use it. So, you know, I didn't want to mix this up with the fact that we're totally against the whole plan to start with. But if this does move forward, one way we feel we could recoup property value is to essentially connect through to Muller Road and use that to go to Market Basket on a daily basis. So leave you with that and hope that we don't create the most bizarre lot in Burlington.
Okay, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Russell. I have one question. Unless I misunderstand, I think if we deny what's before us tonight, the only thing that will change is that the driveway will remain in its original position, which I understand actually might make your lawsuit more, I'm not sure what the word is, I'm looking, could, could make that a stronger case, perhaps that's the best way to say it. Is that, am I correct in that understanding?
I'm sorry, you're, you're asking if, if you were to deny this current plan that it's
Reason, I think the only result of just denying this would be that the, the driveway would shift back to its original position. And what is preferable to you, for what reason?
Well, the, the, if this, okay, yes. In any case, if, if that lawsuit is going to be revisited, we're going to be revising that lawsuit or reissuing it with points about the zoning board and also the quiet title claim. We, we, the, the issue of the 40-foot right-of-way was sort of one of about 15 points in our, in our lawsuit. And we would modify that potentially to emphasize the quiet title claim and make sure that we did get a court ruling on the 40-foot right-of-way. We don't believe there's, there's reason that they have, that 108 has any access to that right-of-way. It's extremely poorly documented.
Okay, I understand.
Lawsuit was going to deal with that.
So that is why that original driveway position is preferable to you because of the question about that right-of-way, correct?
Well, neither of these is acceptable to us. It's, it's the
I understand that. I'm saying, but when we, if we were to deny this, the only thing it would do is move the driveway back to its original position. And it sounds to me like you're saying that would be preferable to you. It's not something you want, but preferable to this shift in the driveway because it would strengthen your lawsuit. Am I correct in understanding that?
I, I wouldn't word it that way. I, I wouldn't say it strengthens our lawsuit. I think it just, it just lets the lawsuit go forward on the basis of both the, the zoning board regularities as well as attaching the quiet title claim for the 40-foot, which we were going to do anyway. I mean, whether or not this is, you know, if that lawsuit moves forward, you know, we, we were going to look at doing all those things.
Well, it sounds like, from what you've said, I think your lawsuit is, you're going to pursue the lawsuit whether this driveway shifts or not.
Well, there's a portion of that, the quiet title claim, the 40-foot right-of-way, we would dearly
That would go, of course. Okay. I understand. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just add to that? So maybe to Town Council's question still.
Yes.
Is there, do we, do we approve the modified plan because the, because the reason for that plan is because the, there's a, there could be a title issue on the original plan? So I'm just, I'm saying, is that
Is that a valid reason?
Yeah, is that a valid reason to approve that, just because somebody wants to move because they have title issues on the original? Or do we just let the original one go because that's what was approved? Is, is that a valid reason to approve? I'm, so I'm trying to see why I would approve versus it seems to me why you want to keep it the same.
That's a good question for Mr. Levy, if he's still here.
I'd like to ask our Town Council if I may.
Sorry, that's what I meant, Mr. Costa, sorry.
Through you, Mr., Madam Chair, to, to Mr. Gaffey's question. So title issues are, are issues that are generally not before planning boards. And the, the law in this regard is, is a bit murky because there, there was a, there was a case that issued at this point about 25 years ago that stands for the proposition very clear that planning boards should not consider matters of title. That matters of title are generally beyond the expertise of planning boards, planning board members, unless they happen to be experienced in, in matters of real estate. And so consequently, matters of title shouldn't be considered. The, the law's murky because there is subsequent case law that says, and I'm going to, I'm going to quote the case law, it's not that helpful, that matters of title can be considered if they quote unquote go to the heart of the matter, whatever it is that that's supposed to mean. So there are some instances, and we, we have examples, so we sort of know what it is. There are some instances where a title issue, if it's raised, will justify an approval or more appropriately, a denial of subdivision approval. If, for example, the applicant can't establish that it owns the roadway or has an interest in the roadway, a legal interest to pass the roadway from which the new subdivision roadway is proposed. That would be something that would be within your purview to consider. As opposed to some random easement that might run across the rear of a property that doesn't generally affect the roadway layout, that would not be something that would be within your purview to consider. The question you've asked is a little bit more nuanced than that, because you're asking, well, can we consider the fact that the justification, as we understand it, as I understand it, the justification for the request, the amendment request that's now before you is better title? We have better title in the new location than we have in the old location. So therefore, you ought to approve the new location. And your question to me, I think, is, is that sufficient justification for approval? And I'm going to sort of answer your question with a question, like good attorneys do. And, and, and I'm going to answer it by saying, well, your, your task as a planning board isn't to necessarily determine whether that's appropriate justification for why they've chosen to advance this proposal. They can advance a new proposal for whatever reason they want, whatever their justification may be. Their justification, their motivation for advancing a proposal is not what's before you. The issue that's before you is, is the new location, the new roadway consistent with your subdivision rules and regulations? Does it meet the requirements of your subdivision rules and regulations? Does it pose problems that are within your purview as a planning board such that you can say, nope, the new location's worse, irrespective of whether it might happen to resolve a title issue for the applicant? If it's more problematic, the roadway in the new location, or the driveway, I should say, in the new location than the old, then the title issues are irrelevant. That's justification alone for you to deny it. Conversely, if it's better or the same in the new location than the old location, doesn't require any additional waivers, then the appropriate course would be to approve it.
Okay. All right. Bill, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And we do have a lawyer on the board who's, I think, experienced in real estate. So maybe if the other member wants to comment on that.
Joe, would you like to weigh in?
Hey, there. Do Rosemary and Joseph DeAngelo's at 24 Cormier Road, that this pond is not even, nothing is said about this pond that's here. If you're going to do something, it's going to affect my backyard, and it's going to affect every butter that you have. This is a good-sized pond. You're going to mess up, I think, the whole area. And this environment is not going to do anyone any good, no matter what the way that you're talking about. That's what we're afraid of, because it doesn't take much for my backyard to get flooded, as it is. Now, you're going to do something different, and you've got to do something with that pond. We are definitely against any addition to Cormier Road or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members in the audience or the neighbors that would like to weigh in?
Madam Chair, I, I have a question. One of the neighbors had mentioned, you know, previous environmental issues. Is there somebody that can elaborate on that and, you know, noting whether or not that this, this lot and the pond that is being discussed is actually free and clear of any environmental issues?
Thank you, Brenda. Kristen, are you aware of this?
I can't speak to any specific, specifically enough to talk to them without, you know, worried about speaking out of turn.
I believe it was the, the Russells that had mentioned something about environmental issues. Is there anything that you can share with us of, of your knowledge?
Just to the history of the property, the 108 Muller property. And we're aware of at least two, if not three violations of drainage and land use on that property over the previous years. And we're just extremely concerned that this new development is just opening the door for more potential violations and more potential litigation. It's just, there's a history of violations. I don't want to, you know, go point to anything specific necessarily. It's on the record. And in fact, the planning board has dealt with just two of those that I know of, so.
Oh, it's my understanding the previous owner of 108 Muller Road owned, and we're talking years back, owned a cess service.
I'm not talking about previous owners. I'm talking about current owners at 108.
No, no, you're not, Neil. That is incorrect. We have had no environmental issue.
Whoever is speaking, you need to identify yourself. You can't just
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, this is Mark Petro.
Permission to speak, and you need to identify yourself. You can't just, you know, jump in. So who is that speaking?
This is Mark Petro, Mark and Renata.
Okay.
I'd like to have, have permission to speak, please.
You may.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There have been no environmental issues with the current owners. In fact, we have developed the property with, with a, with a, with a beef farm on our property. We've, we've invigorated the existing pond by adding fish to it. And we've donated probably about 25% of our land to the Conservation Commission of Burlington. There are no records on file, and, you know, I'd, I'd like to see those, Neil, if you have them, on our environmental issues. Any of the environmental issues that were brought up on this property were because of the prior owner.
Okay, thank you, thank you both, Mark and Renata. But I, I want to be really clear that we're not going to get into a situation where we have neighbors making accusations and then responding to them in this form. It's, that's, would not be inappropriate for them to that.
All right, I completely understand that. I just don't think it's fair for Neil to speak out of turn.
And I gave you a chance to respond, but I don't think we want to, you know, get into further detail on that here.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've heard, are there any other neighbors that want to weigh in on this? No, then I'm going to ask my fellow board members if any of them have further questions.
Madam Chair, excuse me?
Yes, who's that speaking?
Neil Russell again.
Okay, please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to emphasize another point with this modified plan, because I raised it at the last meeting and we neglected to emphasize it. But the new location of this driveway is going to cut into the slope of our hill. It's going to change the drainage of our property and Rau's property. And at a very minimum, it's going to require a reassessment of the drainage. And in my opinion, a, a very long retaining wall, almost the entire length of this driveway, so that the slope of my land is not increased or modified in any way. I can barely run my mower up and down the slope as it is now. And if the slope was to increase, both the drainage is going to change, and it's going to make it extremely difficult for me to mow this portion of my, my lawn. If that slope is made steeper, when we moved in, we re-landscaped this intentionally to a much more gradual slope. And we'd be, this new line, this new driveway is essentially going to disrupt that. And at an absolute minimum, it's going to require some type of retaining wall in order for the slope of my property to stay what it is now. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, may we respond?
I don't know who "we" is.
I'm sorry, this is Brett and Levy.
Oh, Mr. Levy, yes, you may.
I believe Alan Nelson, who's the project manager, is on the phone, and he can speak to this issue. I do not believe any retaining wall is required for this roadway, the driveway. Alan, are you there?
Yes, we are.
Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, may I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There wouldn't be any retaining walls required, and if there were, they wouldn't be put on the neighbor's property anyhow. They would be confined within the easement in the right-of-way in which it was to be built. The plan is to put a The plan is to put a pervious paved driveway, which would allow for the absorption of the surface runoff into the ground, under the driveway, much the same as it is now and as it was with the driveway that was there before the property was graded, regraded, and filled over.
Mr. Nelson, this is Barbara. Would there be any regrading of that property alongside the driveway that would change the slope of the neighbor's property there on, on that side?
No.
It would not change the slope?
No.
I'm sorry, who's that? Okay. It seems to me that we still have some outstanding questions regarding the pond, regarding how this driveway may or may not affect the slope on the neighbor's property. I'd like to hear from my fellow board members. I personally feel like we may have a few more outstanding issues here that we need to address. I'd like to hear what my fellow board members think about whether we want to vote on this or whether we want to continue.
Madam Chair, before you do that, may I speak?
Briefly, Mr. Levy, yes.
Very briefly. So the Conservation Commission, in its comments to the modified application, noted that we would need to return to them for a new NOI in order to go forward with the project, and the applicant has agreed to do that. So any issues related to the pond are clearly within the jurisdiction of CONCOM that will handle those issues. And secondly, I think Alan has made clear that there'll be no change of the slope, the drainage is not going to change, will be pervious pavement, and it should be noted that the town engineering department, the DPW, had no comment on the modified application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. What I would like to hear from, right now, from my fellow board members is whether or not each member feels they have the information they need to make a decision tonight, or if there is more information that they need in order to make their decision. And I'd like to hear from each of you about that. In turn. So, Joe?
Yep, so, actually, I just have a clarification. Mr. Levy had said that the Conservation wanted to relook at this under the new circumstance, under the, under this modification, is that, and they haven't, haven't relooked at it yet, that they haven't come up with a decision at this point?
Right, so what happened, just to understand, was that that process had already begun, and because of the appeal, and because of all the delays, the process was put on hold. So we're simply continuing again with the Conservation Commission?
Okay. So, so Barbara, I don't, I don't think we've ever made a decision prior to the Conservation, given us, you know, their, their comments first. So I don't even think we have, I don't think we really can even make a decision tonight.
Okay, Joe, any other board members?
We usually have comments from every, every department before we make a decision. And here, it is actually probably the most substantial board or commission that, that really would impact whether this should happen or not. We haven't even gotten comments from them yet on a new, on a new proposal.
Madam Chair, Paul Raymond?
Yes, Paul.
I agree with Joe.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
As it is now, you know, I, my opinion, I still would not vote for it, but we have almost studiously not acted unless we were comfortable with Conservation's comments and so forth. So I would put off and see what Conservation comes up with.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Are there any board mem- oh, Bill, I see you putting your hand up, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, just, just one question. I'm personally going to need to go back to the plant to look at the elevations there. I think the applicant said that there was a slope up there, which is not down at the original one, so I'll need that extra information, I'll need to go back and investigate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, it sounds like we've heard from three board members that feel they need more information before we can move forward. Are there any board members that would disagree with that? Okay, therefore, seeing that no one disagrees with that statement, it sounds like we need to do a little bit more work, we need to get information from Conservation, Bill has some more work he wants to do. So I'm going to suggest that we continue this matter to our next meeting.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, before we do that, could we make sure that we do have a topographical map or plan of the approved driveway location and the proposed driveway location? So we can see those options?
Be it for our next meeting?
Yes, please, yeah, that should be for our next meeting, if possible.
Yes, thank you, Bernie, yes. Good.
With that, if you want, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to our planning board meeting of October 1st, 2020.
Second, Michael, second.
Thank you.
Chairman Larue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impala?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Rapaport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Before we let you go, I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware, is there any information we need from them? Obviously, we need to do some homework, we need to hear from our old deterioration people. Mr. Covino has made a request, is there anything else we want to request of the applicant that we would need for the next meeting? Staff, do you have anything you would like to add? Okay, all right, then we will move on. Thank you all.
Barbara, I do, I do have one question, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sort of, I do want some sort of, because we really haven't, it was an issue, you know, a comment brought up tonight that really, you know, kind of made me think twice about what's, you know, the relocation of this thing is, you know, is the new location and the new grade, you know, given the fact it's impermeable, impermeable surface, is that going to create? I heard there was, it was, it could possibly be issues about water runoff onto the house that, that, you know, that this, that this right-of-way is going to, or going through, I should say. Is that, I'd, I'd like to get a better understanding of that, whether there's going to be runoff coming off of this thing because it's closer, or, you know, the relocation of this thing is going to be more of a problem to that, to that, to that house that, that this cuts through.
Right, um, yes, how can we address that, Kristen? Is this something we would need to perhaps ask our, our own engineering department to weigh in on?
Uh, we have the list of questions, we'll, we'll try to find a way to best address the question. It is, it's a permeable pavement, not an impervious surface, just to clarify.
It's a permeable pavement, okay.
Yes, okay.
What is, what is the permeable pavement?
You mean, what is the material?
We can, you can have the engineer answer that question right now, or we can add it to get an explanation.
Why don't we find that, why don't we just have that as, as, you know, with our next explanation of that? Because that wasn't, that was, I wasn't aware of that, I'm not sure that that is something that everybody was aware of except for me, but that the driveway or the roadway is going to be permeable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Barbara, Paul.
Yes.
Joe, quite a while back, we had an issue regarding, you know, water was going to be running off a particular surface and so forth, and there was a group at the University of New Hampshire that studied that fairly extensively, and we discussed permeable pavement at that time. So apparently, the water can drain through it.
Well, so, so is it, yeah, so I, I remember, I do know about that, but the, but the fact is, even though it's permeable, it, you know, if the grade is steep enough, it's not, I, I, if the grade is steep enough and the water is running hard enough, you know, it, I understand it will seep through eventually, if, you know, if it sits on that surface for any length of time, but it's not, it's not like grass. In other words, it's, you know, in other words, it's not as, it's not as permeable as grass is. So if sheet flow, if, if the grade is, if the grade is steep enough, sheet flow is not going to permeate through that. That's my understanding of that, but I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not right with that. So I, that's those are the answers I'd like to get.
It's a legitimate question, I think, Joe, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Paul. Okay, so we have already voted to continue this. Kristen has a list of questions for the applicant, and I'm sure she will share those with you. Thank you all for your time, and we will see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are moving on to item 7B on our agenda. Item 7B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 101 Francis Wyman Road and 3 to 6 Dartmouth Road. General Walker Estates LLC is the applicant. I want to be very clear, because this has been a longstanding project, but what we are discussing tonight is very narrow. We are talking about the elimination of the cul-de-sac off 101 Francis Wyman Road, that's all we're discussing. So I want to make sure that we keep our focus where it is supposed to be tonight on this. So, who is here representing General Walker Estates? Mr. Dresser, I think you have your microphone off, if you're speaking. No? Okay, who is here representing General Walker?
I am.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Wasn't me, thanks.
Okay.
Can I share my screen, Brady, or?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, for the record, Stephen Dresser. Today, we're here just to talk about the elimination of the cul-de-sac at the front. This is a continued public hearing, and this is a revision of the sheet of the subdivision, shows the revision of, of that change. At the past public hearing, pretty much the only thing I think we were asked to do was to look at moving these houses back, which we did. These are now 42 and 43 feet off the edge of the right-of-way. The center line of the driveways are 55 feet from the pavement. And just to give you some perspective of where these are, this, this is the existing house on that site, so we pretty much matched them up with that existing houses, so the neighbors can have some perspective of, of where they're going to be. And that said, again, it was a cul-de-sac, an on-paper cul-de-sac at the front, we went to the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board through the original public hearing, to try and eliminate that. This has also allowed us to eliminate a combined drainage system, and we can put the houses on individual systems. This is the revised limit of work back here. Keep in mind, these are not the revised homes, these homes have pushed back 16 feet, but the limit of work remains the same, which is a 10,000 square foot reduction from the, in clearing from the original plan. So any questions, glad to answer them.
I apologize for my dog, but thank you, Mr. Dresser. Kristen, did you want to add anything?
Um, yeah, so if you remember, this was the cul-de-sac to get the frontage requested, it was kind of a weird kind of vault, and not even really any roadway. And in the original decision, we actually highlighted the awkward shape and suggested that the applicant go to the Board of Appeals to request a frontage variance, and then, and we sent a letter to the Board of Appeals indicating our support for that variance that would make the two homes and the roadway layout consistent with the, the right-of-way. So, as it is now, the layout of home. So the board did support in the initial review of the, of this, of the elimination of the cul-de-sac, which you see here, and the frontage variance. At the last meeting, there was an abutter who mentioned that they did want the houses pushed back a little bit to be more consistent with the streetscape. If you recall, in the original discussion, as well as the neighbor to the bottom of this plan, Ms. Smith, there's an existing stone wall that runs through this property, and we did want to just remind, in, from the original, we wanted it protected and intact, and just, again, just want to reiterate that that stone wall was very important to the neighborhood, and just make sure that the area of construction doesn't disturb that existing stone wall, which exists on the, the property line there. The other question, oh, we just needed, we want to make sure that the variance, a note of the variance that was approved is added to the plan with the appropriate registry And that was, that's about all we had in terms of revisions required as part of the elimination of the cul-de-sac here. And again, there isn't a joint drainage system, so each property is, is required that, the elimination of the cul-de-sac eliminated a lot of pavement that would have been here that would have required additional systems, so, so that's why the systems have been modified. So in terms of the limited scope of this request, I think overall, it's in, consistent with the request of the planning board and the initial review.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. I think this is pretty straightforward, are there any planning board members, I'm not going to call you each by name, is there anyone who has a question specifically on this one change?
This is Paul, Barbara, I do.
Go ahead, Paul.
There was, there was one house on, on this lot, right? It appeared to me, I'm looking at this, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you're going to get frontage, because there's a street that goes down not far from here, and the, when I saw this lot, one, one time I went enough, Francis Wyman Road, I mean, it was just piled up with huge chunks of concrete and so forth, and, and the house, you know, was abandoned, but I'm trying to figure out how you're going to get two houses there.
Actually, Paul, I've been down there too, and, and you're right, there was, it was a real mess, they have done some cleanup there, but that's the reason, the way they were getting frontages, they were building a cul-de-sac. We didn't want them to build the cul-de-sac because it was just increasing impervious surface and making this weird little bump off of Francis Wyman, so-
I understand that.
They have a variance so that they don't have to have the full frontage.
Have they gotten the variance?
Yes.
Well, so the Board of Appeals gave them a variance. What, may I ask?
We wanted the Board of Appeals to give them, we asked the Board of Appeals to give them the variance, Paul, because we didn't want that weird circle right off of Francis Wyman.
Uh, can you tell me what the frontage is now on those two lots?
I'm sure Mr. Dresser can.
Yeah, I believe they're 75 feet, roughly 75, maybe a little more than that, somewhere in there.
Okay, thank you. So they could have had 100 feet each if we allowed them to build that bubble, Paul, but-
I understand that.
That would have been worse, and it would have had a lot more impervious surface as well.
Oh, I hate these choices. You know, a bad choice-
But they already had the variance, Paul.
Yeah, but, but I understand that, but I still consider a bad choice being less offensive than a, a better choice, if you will. But, okay, I have to live with some of this stuff, so, yeah, thank you.
Any other board members that have questions on this? All right, are there any other people in the listening audience that want to comment specifically on this part of the plan, not the other part of the plan that we've been discussing in previous meetings? Anyone? Okay. Um, oh, who's that?
Uh, this is Joe Mullen. I live at 106 Francis Wyman Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Yes, go ahead, please.
And an, an issue that I had raised, a question that I had raised was that, uh, would these driveway widths permit people to front end out into Francis Wyman? I don't see a kind of turnabout. Um, all of the houses coming out to Francis Wyman, there are butters can turn around and come out front end.
Yeah, they'd probably include a turnaround and we can add that to, to the, um, to the plan. You know, a little bump out, so when they come out of their garage, they can turn in and go forward.
That would certainly be beneficial to the people who live there, who would be very difficult for them to get out onto Francis Wyman Road otherwise.
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
Um, no, uh, this is superimposing the, I'd always had difficulty looking at plans to correlate where the houses were going in relation to the existing house, but this correlates to a final.
That is helpful. I agree with you. It's helpful to see it that way. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, um, that would like to speak on this matter?
Uh, me, please. I'm, I'm Marjorie Smith.
Okay. Hi, Marjorie.
Hi. Um, so I, I wonder about the tree line that has been in, in the plans. Oh, it's in this one too, proposed tree line. Um, how many feet is the, um, the edge of the house to the, the stone wall?
Okay, um, I'm, just one thing before that answer. Can you just identify for our recording clerk what your address is?
It's 105 Francis Wyman Road.
Thank you. And Mr. Dresser, please go ahead and answer.
It, it'll meet the zoning requirement, which is fifteen feet. Um, typically you give it a little bit, so it's going to be kind of in the sixteen-foot range between fifteen and sixteen feet.
And, and there's going to be a tree line in that sixteen feet?
It's kind of, you know, we don't identify the individual trees, so that's, you know, that's the area, they would not cut beyond that line, but we're not saying there's actually physical trees there. Uh, if they are, they would not be cut, though.
Oh, I don't think there are any trees. Oh, I, I was under the impression that you were actually planting trees, uh, for more privacy. And, um, it, it just seems that there would be more privacy if the houses were further back. Um, because there's, there's a whole lot more room in the back, because it, it looks as though the, um, the property kind of wings out just a little bit. I'm not sure if that's just, uh, uh, the drying and that would give a little bit more of the, the, uh...
No, they're, they're essentially, those lines are essentially parallel. You want to get more width from that. Uh, the whole point of this was to move the houses somewhat forward to avoid long driveways and, and odd situations.
It's tough being right on Francis Wyman, real close to the road. And, and I understand that fifty feet is what the, the original house was. Um, but hearing the motorcycle...
Were you, were you asking to put trees there or are you just wondering if they are?
Well, it, it seems as though it would be nice to have trees and it said that it was a proposed tree line, so I thought that there were trees. And so I was...
I understand why you would think that. Um, and, and I don't think the applicant would have a problem putting a few arbivores over there if you would, if, if you would like to see that. If you wouldn't like to see that, he wouldn't have a problem not doing it either. I'm not sure which direction you were asking.
I think some trees would be nice. I also think it would be nice if the houses were even further back. My opinion.
Okay, um, thank you, Marjorie. Um, we don't actually, I don't believe we actually have the authority to tell them they have to move the houses further back. And there's also the, the other, um, benefit to keeping them where they are is that it's less impervious surface. If you move them further back, you have a longer driveway, more impervious surface, and, and that's not generally something we prefer. But thank you for coming and, um, I think the trees are a great idea. So, thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to weigh in?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Um, I think so. Which, who's that speaking?
Uh, this is Joe Mullen again, 106 Francis Wyman.
Hi, Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, I, I, just to dovetail on what Marnie was saying. Help me with this part, I just don't understand. It was an approved plan and it was approved with a hundred and fifty-foot driveways, which we're going to substitute for the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
If, if you were to not approve what's being asked for today, then we'd go back to that, wouldn't we?
Um, I think if we did not approve this, they would be required to build that circle in order to get the frontage. It, and that's what we're trying to avoid. Does that make sense? The previous plan had that bubble, like a cul-de-sac, but the cul-de-sac didn't have a street first, it was just the bubble.
Now, there was this plan as well.
Hmm? What's this plan?
I'm trying to...
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard for us to see that.
I know, I'm trying to get it to the point of the houses. That, well, this plan did exist with the two houses and the long driveways.
We were asked by the planning board to not build that. We were asked to, to go get a variance so that we wouldn't have the long driveways. So we would go, I, I suppose we would go back to the longer driveways if this wasn't approved, but I'm not sure what, why, if we have a variance, we have, that means we have the required frontage.
Can, can the neighbors explain to me why the...
Especially if it was the planning board who asked us to do it.
Right. Can, can the neighbors explain why they want the houses further back with longer driveways?
I think it's an issue for me of privacy.
Because they, because this house is closer to the street and you're on the other side of the street?
Well, because it's so close to my sideline.
It's basically in the same place as, as the house that exists now.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
Okay, Mr. Mullen, um, if you're still listening, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
No?
I, I guess, you had said that you, that the board had no power to ask for the houses to be moved.
We can ask anything, we can't demand it.
Correct. But, but Mr. Dresser already moved the houses from the last one we looked at. And that was very reasonable and I like it. And as far as my point, my point of view is, as, as long as the houses are, I, I wouldn't have come to the last meeting if the houses were located pretty much where the existing house is located. But, but they came substantially closer, so I, I showed up to find out what was going on. Um, it's possible, Marnie, she would have to speak for herself, but it sounds like she would still prefer the houses further back. And while I understand it's not within the board's power to demand something, we already, it's a discussion.
Yes.
Question for Mr. Dresser would be, uh, I'm, I'm very pleased that the houses are pretty much right where the 101 is, but, a- and I'm sensitive to the idea that we're trying to reduce the impervious surface and I hated the cul-de-sac and that's just an ocean of asphalt that would be there. So let's find a way around it. So I guess just the question is, is there any, is there any room to go further back and still allow the two drainage structures instead of a common drain?
No.
Or whatever? I'm just asking.
No, we, we, we feel that we've, we've compromised the position where it's, it's a reasonable house and a reasonable driveway. We, we agree with the planning board's decision initially to, to request a variance for this purpose. Right where...
Okay.
Where we've agreed to do this. Again, they, they can ask us to do it, we've agreed to do it. They couldn't demand that we did it, but, but we agreed to do this and this is where we are.
Okay, thank you. Um, fellow board members, does anybody else have any other questions after hearing from the neighbors? Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Griffin.
My name is Reginald Griffin. I live at 25 Gloria Circle. Based upon the plan that I'm looking at right now, the houses are proposed to move back to where two houses will be at the same distance from Francis Wyman as the existing house. The drainage will be in the back. We know the existing house doesn't cause any downhill drainage problems. My suggestion is, with the document I have before me and the plan before me, put the two houses where they are. The gentleman, Mr. Mullen, is happy because they're back. It can't be any worse for the young lady who just presented it, because they're going to be opposite to where her existing house is versus the house that's about to be demolished. And I know I don't have any water coming down the hill and going on my property or in my basement or anywhere else. So I vote for what I see, which is fine and dandy. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, uh, this is Ernie. Just can we add into the, to Farrow's decision, since the, uh, applicant is willing to do it, maybe some trees on that side there?
Thank you, I think we should do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. All right. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
So moved.
I said it earlier.
Second to Paul Morrison.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba. Member Clark Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to section 2.4 of the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations. The Planning Board hereby finds the General Walker Estates Amendment to the Definitive Subdivision Plan, application submitted by 101 Francis Wyman LLC for modification of a six-lot subdivision to remove the cul-de-sac at 101 Francis Wyman Road to be in complete and proper submission. Is complete and proper submission, sorry.
Yes. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to section 2.5 of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, uh, of land, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81R, the Planning Board hereby considers the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations, some requested by the applicant and others offered by the Planning Board for the definitive subdivision plan entitled General Walker Estates in Burlington, Mass, submitted by 101 Francis Wyman LLC on January 2nd, 2020, revised to September 10th, 2020, prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way Incorporated. The waivers requested below have been reviewed by the Planning Board, reviewed, and the Planning Board finds certain waivers to be appropriate and modifies others for the following reasons as printed.
So if I can, Madam Chair, if I can just intervene, so just to quickly summarize, it's a long statement, but the waiver is for the, um, the frontage, uh, that was requested by the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals has approved it, um, and to the waiver to construct the cul-de-sac and in exchange the two driveways.
Okay, thank you.
Proceed with your call.
Uh, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, uh, make a motion to approve the subdivision plan entitled General Walker Estates in Burlington, Mass, submitted by 101 Francis Wyman LLC on July 6th, 2016, prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way Incorporated dated July 2nd, 2020, revised to September 10th, 2020, to be further revised as, as conditioned herein, reflecting a six-lot subdivision subject, some, subject to the following terms and conditions as printed and as amended.
Second.
So the first date should read, um, a few, uh, later than sixteen, the original was sixteen.
Okay.
The, uh, plan date is...
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
And just to, um, we, as amended, to include the trees.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Dresser. Okay, moving on, we are on item 7C on our agenda, which is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 26 Beacon Street, First Patriot Corporation is the applicant. So, um, who is here representing First Patriot?
Uh, I am as well. Uh, Patrick from Harvard St. Hudson. Uh, I see Colleen and, um, Charles, I'm not sure if they're on.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I know that we had a, since our last meeting, we had both a, a sitewalk and we also had a demonstration, um, to see or to judge the noise level. Um, I was not able to attend, but I was able to watch the videos that staff took. I hope the rest of my planning board members have also been able to view those videos, if they were not able to be present. Um, so, um, all right, I'm going to try to... Would, is, Patrick, are you presenting on behalf of your client?
Uh, yes, I can, um, do you just want to, do you want to watch the video or?
Oh, no, we, I don't think we need to watch the...
Okay.
I think everyone's probably had a chance to do that already.
Okay, good.
Kristen, do you want to just wrap up the discussion for everyone?
Uh, yes. Um, so, let me grab the plans. And, um, get them up for you, sorry.
All right, as Patrick is doing that, um, you might want to ask any of the members who did go on the sitewalk, um, just thoughts and thoughts about that, um, as Patrick's getting those plans up.
Thank you. Um, it's my understanding that Bill Gaffney was there, Ernie Cavino and Paul Raymond? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, am I missing anyone? No, okay. So, um, Bill, I, I, could you give us the summary of what you all witnessed and what your thoughts were?
Sure, just, again, uh, this was during lunchtime, uh, noon time, uh, during the day, so I was, I was at my lunch break, uh, my day job. But, um, uh, so what we did was we, uh, we saw the recycling, uh, trash receptacle, uh, be, be moved and put back. Uh, the truck removed it, then went around the block once and put it back. Uh, myself, uh, member Cavino, member Raymond, all were standing fifty feet back, and that was the distance from where the proposed, uh, building was going to be to the, uh, to the butters', uh, house. So we, uh, we all stood back at fifty feet and, uh, just watched it and listened to it. Um, and we had the neighbor right next to us, uh, so I thought it was, uh, was a good visit and appreciate the applicants, uh, doing that for us. And we had the neighbor right next to us, uh, so I thought it was, uh, it was a good visit and appreciate the applicants, uh, doing that for us to demonstrate that. I thought that was uh, really, uh, really well done, so we get a good sense of what the neighbors going to be impacted with additional, uh, noise and traffic. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And what was your impression of that impact?
Also, I, um, you know, I'd let the neighbor talk to that. She's the one that's, that's most impacted. Uh, she's, she's going to get more noise than she has now. Um, but let her, I'd let her speak to how she feels about that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other board, any of your board members who were present, if you want to weigh in and add what Bill gave us? Or?
Just a, just a real, uh, real quick one. Obviously, the, uh, the driver of the truck that was picking up and, uh, dropping the dumpster was being very, very, very careful. And, uh, as he should be, uh, and hopefully, uh, he would continue to do that. I would hope that management down there would make sure he does that. I, I feel they would. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, my apologies, Charles Myhawke calling in.
Oh, okay, hi, Charles.
Hi, I'm sorry, my computer has frozen up on me. I apologize for not being there when you asked who was representing earlier.
That, that's quite all right. Okay, so hopefully everyone who was not present got to watch the video. I did watch the video. I did think it was very helpful. Um, so I think we've all discussed this. I think we all know what, what we're talking about here. Um, I don't know if we need to review again the details. Yes.
Madam Chair, just, uh, I don't know if Mrs. Donato was on, but she was the one who was most affected, and she was there. I don't know if she would like to weigh in?
Um, we'll definitely get to her, yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, that's okay. I just wanted to know if there are any board members that had other questions before I open it up to the other people who might be listening. Board members? Okay, now I'm looking to see if there are any other people in the listening audience, especially neighbors, who might like to weigh in on this. Is there anyone present? Can we tell if Mrs. Donato is on the line? No. Okay. Any other neighbors? Okay, um, staff, did we hear from Mrs. Donato in, in, at the time of the demonstration?
So, uh, both Brady and Liz were, um, on the sidewalk. I had another, um, meeting to attend. Uh, and I know they both spoke with Mrs. Uh, Donato, so if, um, they want to weigh in.
Madam Chair, I am here.
Oh, okay, there she is.
Mrs. Donato, welcome.
I am here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would you like to give us your impressions after watching the demonstration?
Did we hear from Mr. Donato in, in, at the time of the demonstration? So, Brady and Liz were, um,
Somebody has a TV on.
Mrs. Donato, are you still there? Let's give her a minute. I, I think it's important we hear from her.
Well, we're waiting. Can I just thank our staff videographer on, uh, her very good help? Thank you.
It was very well done. Mrs. Donato?
Hello, I'm, yeah, this is me. Sorry, I got disconnected and my computer froze.
That's quite all right, go ahead.
Fine. I think if truly the, um, the compactors, the way they did at the site, at the demonstration, that's going to be fine. I mean, I certainly can live with that. Um, but it was, it was certainly a controlled effort on their part.
Okay, did you have anything else you wanted to add or any questions you want to ask? I wonder if we've lost her again.
Bob, Paul, just to comment if I may, on the, there are, there are like compressors inside of that big, um, you know, the big, uh, thing that, uh, all the trash goes into. And, but, and I was impressed, they were, they're relatively very quiet. I mean, people put things in, and when there gets to be a certain amount, it compresses it down a little so they can get a lot into it. But I, I will add to how impressed I was with the driver. I mean, it was hard to, you know, can drop that thing when usually, you know, you hear a big bang when it goes down and so forth. But I, I'm sure that they'll, uh, uh, instruct their drivers regarding that placement and so forth.
Okay, is there someone else trying to speak? I can't tell if that's someone who's trying to speak or if that's someone's TV, so is Mrs. Donato present?
But I, I'm sure that they'll, uh, their drivers regarding, regarding so forth, so forth.
All right, we're hearing Paul back again. Okay.
So I, I think it's someone who's watching B- Cat, because B- Cat's a couple seconds behind us, so what you're hearing is someone, there's not
All right, whoever's watching B- Cat, if you could please mute your computer, that would be very helpful. Thank you. All right. Um, I'm going to just ask my fellow board members if they all have any questions or comments they want to make on this. Joe.
Can I, before, before you get into that, can I just highlight just the, the conditions that we have included?
Sure, and, and include the part with the garage in the back too, please.
Yeah, so we did, um, request that there be sound dampening in the structure itself. Um, like insulation, you know, insulating the walls and so forth, um, to try to help minimize the sound of the internal compactors, even though we, we did listen to them, they weren't very loud. Um, as well as the, um, the doors that you pick up to put your trash in. You know, we didn't want that metal-to-metal sound, so I'm not exact, we just wanted to understand a little bit more about what that door was and make sure that, um, there was a dampening there. As well as, we talked about the landscaping along the front drive, um, and that is conditioned to be reviewed and approved by myself in consultation with the chair. Um, and let's see, the last piece of it was the phase two piece for the the Conex containers that are in this plan to be proposed to be moved to the corner. What we have specifically said is we are not approving the movement of the Conex containers, but we are approving and will, um, and we request them to submit a kind of a phase two structure, garage structure in place of those Conex containers, um, in the future. So, um, and that's, that's, we have it right now. We we're kind of toying between, you know, within 18 months of the filing of the decision, they submit a plan for review or, um, you know, tie it to the, the, not the temporary, but final occupancy of, of this building. So we, we need to play with that a little bit, but overall, we just wanted to put a workable timeline to give them enough time to think about and design and, you know, get that in moving, but make sure that we were not specifically approving um, the continuation of those Conex containers, but giving them time to transition.
Okay, thank you. All right, Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Nope, I'm all set.
Ernie?
No, I'm set, thank you.
Hello?
No.
Okay, um. Bill Gaffney.
Nope, no comments, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Brenda Rappaport.
I'm all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, Mike Españo.
Um, all set, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to staff and, uh, thank the building staff for setting up the site visits and the, the dumpsters. I really helped the job pretty smoothly, so, thanks for that. That's all, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I think I may have heard someone else trying to speak, perhaps a neighbor a moment ago. Is there someone else on?
This is Jen.
Jen, huh?
Um, Helen has commented on Facebook. I just want to be sure the drivers do the same.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Helen. All right, I think we are ready to
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, make a motion to approve the request of First Patriot Corporation.
I'm voting closing the public hearing, I'm afraid.
Oh, sorry, sorry, beg your pardon.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Take it away, Ernie.
Thank you. Motion to approve the request of First Patriot Corporation, the applicant, for approval of a site plan application for a property located at 26 Be- Beacon Street to permit the construction of an enclosed trash slash recycle compactor accessory use structure with automated package delivery slash pickup room and an exterior covered school bus shelter area as reflected on a site plan entitled Beacon Village Improvements, 26 Beacon Street, Burlington, Mass, prepared by Howard Steen Stein Hudson, dated May 22, 2020. This project is subject to the following terms, revisions, and conditions as printed and amended.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes, sorry.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, I think
Thank you, everyone.
A very nice amenity for the people living, um, in those apartments. I especially am happy that the schoolchildren will have someplace to wait for the bus where they'll be safe from the elements. I think this is going to be a nice addition. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, this is Charles Myhawke from Brick Point. Thank you to you and the board for all your help.
Thank you. Okay, so we are moving on. The next item on our agenda is minutes for the meeting of July 20, 2020. I hope my, my fellow board members have had a chance to review them. Is everyone ready to vote on the minutes? Is there anyone who cannot vote on the minutes for July 20?
Those, July 20th or August 20th?
Madam Chair, it's August 20.
Oh, August 20, sorry, thank you. So compliments to Brady and Don for keeping us so up to date on minutes. That's fantastic.
Yes.
So I'm ready for a motion on minutes.
Motion to approve a minute of August 20, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba. Member Clerk Españo.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. And again, I'm so happy that we're so up to date on our minutes. That's great. Um, okay, we do
Madam Chair, I just want to highlight in discussion, we don't have to deal with it tonight, but I did send out a schedule for 2021, so if everyone can for our next meeting, we do need to vote next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, we don't have any other matters on, under discussion. Is there anything any of the board members would like to bring up at this time? Okay, seeing no one, I am ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Ma- Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. All right, thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Bye.